Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting on Monday, May 6, 2019. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Absent.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Excused.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Before we begin, just wanted to express our condolences to Counselor Manna's family as she recently lost her father over the weekend as well as her aunt. So, on behalf of the Southbridge Town Council, our deepest condolences go out to Counselor Manna and her family. Considering except Town Council minutes of Monday, April 22, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Errors, corrections, admissions, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of corrections on page two, item 11. It's near the end of that section where it reads, starting on the right-hand side. Counselor Nash asked if there were enough funds in the council reserve for this item. That's not what I said. I asked what was available, so I asked for amendment to read. Counselor Nash asked what amount is available in council reserve.
Thank you.
Then, on page five, under Counselors Forum, Counselor Nash, halfway down, putting $300,000 into stabilization, not 3,000. And the next sentence below starts, he announced that, and this should read, that the water department, Southbridge Water Department, that is, was recognized by Mass Boot D E P. And Mary has been notified of those suggestions.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor as amended? Opposed, unanimous, well-presented? Subcommittee for Poets, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting just right before this meeting where we talked about the new treasurer collector, the council revising the treasurer collector budget, and talked about the marijuana issue, which we will all be discussing these issues on this agenda tonight. Also, on April 29, we had a meeting where we talked about, let me see here, we did the professional services agreement on the fuel farm project, and we also continued to discuss, we also discussed bylaw review issues and whether or not we wanted to go forward with that, and a couple of other minor things. So, that's where we stand at the moment. I do not have, oh yes, I do have one scheduled for next week. Actually, it's going to be next Monday, right before this meeting, before the Council of the Whole at 6:00 PM on Monday, the 13th.
Thank you. D P W, Counselor DePietro, he is not here this evening. There is a meeting scheduled, I know he had a meeting to discuss budgets last week. There is a meeting scheduled for May 14 at 6:30 PM, Joint D P W Town Council meeting.
Is it 6:30?
6:30, I have. I have on this calendar, I don't know if it was changed on the new calendar that came out today, but I have it on the 14th. Education and Human Services, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had meetings on April 23 and May 1 to discuss the budget items that are appropriate for our committee, and we also had some other agenda items that are coming up, I believe, Agenda Items 10 and 14. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Plan and Development has no scheduled meeting in the near future, and we have had no meetings since our last Town Council meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Protections in Persons and Property, Counselor Manna. Counselor Manna is excused this evening. There is a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, May 8, 7:00 PM. It's continuation of the budget hearing to discuss the Police Department budget. Chairman's announcement, just an announcement that we've had an ongoing issue with the rail trail. In regards to that rail trail, I have scheduled a council meeting of the whole with an executive session to discuss the parameters of that lease agreement, exchange of property, so that is scheduled for next Monday evening before the General Government meeting.
After?
After the General Government meeting. I think that's all I have for right now, thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Town Council knows, I want to make the public aware, the Town of Southbridge received a grant from the state of Massachusetts to develop what is called a Facilities Management Report. We did it for the town side of government. We recently had a report completed for the school administration. I provided a link to that to all the Town Counselors today for them to look at, and it really outlines the future needs of our school system in terms of their infrastructure for the next 10 years. I've had an opportunity to read the report, it's very extensive, but it also says we have a lot of work to do, and there's going to be a lot of money needed to develop that infrastructure and make those repairs. I would say that once we get through this budget process, that I'm going to arrange a meeting between the school receiver and this board to discuss that report, to go in-depth. I think this next year is going to be a real planning year for how we move forward, and then hopefully we can start allocating some funds to do some of the work in 2021. It's an eye-opener when you have to look at the report, when you look at the needs of the facilities, such as the roofs and the outside exterior landscaping, HVAC, all the equipment within the buildings. We have a very old infrastructure, and it's going to take a lot of work, and I appreciate, I know this was important to the Town Council to get this information, as well to Mr. Velar, our school receiver. So, we've had a great relationship, and I really appreciate the relationship between the Town Council members and our receiver, I think it's been great. This is going to be another area where we're really going to have to cooperate to figure a plan for the future. I also tonight want to thank our current treasurer collector, as all of you know, and I think the citizens read in the newspaper, we're losing her to Nantucket. And I got to say, while I'm very, very happy for her, I'm very, very sad for the Town of Southbridge, because I think she was one of our truest assets. She's done a phenomenal job as part of my financial management team. She's always a leader, she's someone that every other department head can count on, the Town Council can count on, that I can count on, and it's really wonderful when you can look for somebody and for advice and always get the right answer, and we know she's going to do her homework and get it done. Nantucket, if you're going to be listening, you are a lucky town. We are sad to let her go, she's going to be a tremendous asset for you, but all of us, and I mean every town employee wishes you, Mindy, the very best. We know you're going to do a great job, and more than anything else, we are going to be jealous of that beautiful ocean view you're going to be looking at, but we want to wish you the very, very best, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations, tonight we have a presentation by the Fire Chief, Paul Normandin, as well as Peter Peliquin from Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. We got in the town hazardous mitigation plan. Chief?
So, good evening, everybody. As we get our IT department back up here to get the presentation back up online, because we waited too long. This gentleman standing next to me is Peter Peliquin, he is, works for Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We do a lot of work in regards to grants within the town of Southbridge and also in Central Massachusetts. Peter really kind of helps us get through all these grant processes through Homeland Security. What we've been, what we'd like to present tonight is the hazardous mitigation plan for the town. Very important part about this hazardous mitigation plan, we need to update all of our core structures within the, within town. The plan will be put together. Peter will go through some of the slides to explain what it's for. I think the most important part of this is that this plan needs to be adopted by us, the council, or by you guys, the council, along with being seen through the state and the federal governments to continue getting grants for the Town of Southbridge. That's all grants, economic grants, all grants involved. So, this plan is well on its way of being forwarded and updated, and Peter Peliquin will fill you in on where we're at.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Chair and the council. As the Chief said, I'm here tonight to give, to give the council and the town an update of where we are in the planning process for the hazard mitigation plan, why we're doing this plan, and some of the things that the town has come up with so far during this planning process. So, CMRPC received a grant on behalf of 27 of the communities in Southern, the Southern two-thirds of Worcester County. Southbridge is one of the towns lucky enough to be part of that grant.
Can you speak into the mic if you don't mind?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because it's hard, very difficult to hear in this building, so, thank you.
So, the Town of Southbridge is one of those 27 communities that is part of this grant process to update the hazard mitigation plan. The current plan has expired in 2018, as an FYI. So, why is Southbridge creating this plan? It's part of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. FEMA came up with this, with this law back in 2000 to essentially, at its core, get towns and cities to take, to take a good look at their town through infrastructure and all their, all their natural hazard needs, how to approve upon them. So, FEMA wants towns to sit down, really look at what they have, what the needs are, how, what we are doing, what we can do better, before they just hand out money, monies to rebuild after a natural disaster. That's essentially what it is at its core. And also, in part of that law is that FEMA states that every town and city must have this plan in place before they'll grant monies from the, from the two separate pools of money, one being the relief funds, FEMA relief funds, and one, the other pool of money being mitigating hazards, grant monies. So, what is the hazard mitigation? It's at its core, it's to permanently reduce or prevent losses of life, injury, and property damage by using long-term strategies. It's another way to say what is the town or city doing now to lessen the impact of a natural hazard, as long, also, what can the town or city do in the future to lessen those impacts? According to the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Council, they estimate that a dollar spent now on mitigating hazards will save $4 in relief costs when the natural hazard does So, kind of like I touched on a little bit, the hazard mitigation is really trying to break the cycle of a disaster occurs, we rebuild that infrastructure, whether it's culverts, or a building, or power lines, anything along those lines, and then get money from FEMA, rebuild it, another disaster happens, rebuild, so on and so forth, so we're trying to really break that cycle. When we're planning for the, for what natural hazards we're trying to mitigate from, we've looked at everything from flooding to hurricanes, tornadoes, high wind events, winter storms, snow and ice, earthquakes, extreme temperatures of cold or hot, droughts, rush fires, et cetera. Pretty much nothing was left to chance, and I just want to stress that this plan is not an emergency response plan. So, this plan is to identify strengths and weaknesses throughout the town, and how they affect, have effects on natural, natural hazards. So, the planning process to date, CMRPC provided technical assistance to the town for plan development. The town coordinated, coordinated its local hazard mitigation team, we conducted three meetings. Some of the, some of the members of the community that were in, in those meetings was the Fire Chief, Chief Normandin, D P W Director, members from the Police Department, along with the Town Manager, and I've also spoke with planners and other members of the community throughout this process. Today is the first public meeting, this is where I'm giving the council an update of the plan, where we are in the development process, and what are some of the things that have come out of this process so far. Part of development of the plan, this is both on CMRPC's end and the town's end, some things CMRPC did prior to the meetings, but we can't, we can't have an effective plan if we don't talk to the town, so that's why we met with the town. Some of the things we identified were, we identified and mapped critical facilities, local hazard areas, we reviewed the existing hazard mitigation plan from 2012, we identified and prioritized new strategies, along with updating some and reincorporating plans that are ongoing and continuous from 2012, and we also gathered feedback and input from the public. That occurred in the spring of 2018, I apologize for the typo, it's spring of 2019 today. That public survey went out, it was open for roughly a month, it's still, it's actually still open to this day, but I wanted to bring to the council's attention that there was only 37 respondents from the Town of Southbridge, and as I'll mention later on in this process, after tonight, the plan will go out to a 14-day public comment, so I was going to see if we would like to share the link to that survey to see if we can get more public input. But a few of the things that came out of the, out of the survey was that most residents, about 50% of the residents, their biggest concern was, or excuse me, 50% of the residents were somewhat concerned about natural disasters, and there was about roughly 15-ish percent for extremely concerned and not really concerned at all, so about what normally happens is somewhere right in the middle. The biggest concerns for the town residents was snowstorms, thunderstorms, and hurricane and high wind events. Roughly 70% of the town, or excuse me, 70% of the respondents were, felt the town was somewhat prepared for a natural hazard, where 20% felt that the town was not very, or the town was not prepared, and about 10% of the town said that, thought the town was extremely So, kind of the four, the four tools and techniques we use for hazard mitigation is more or less the four areas, which are very broad categories of what we look for and try to incorporate and figure out where we can improve in what we are successfully doing. Those are structure and infrastructure projects, preparedness, coordination, response actions, education and awareness programs, and local plans and regulations. So, some of the places, some of the things that we want to think about when we're thinking of infrastructure, structure and infrastructure projects, is preventing floodwaters. Flooding tends to be one of the more ongoing things throughout the communities in Southern Worcester County, just being the nature of the, of the way that the natural landscape is, how much rainfall we have, and snowfall in the, in the winter turns to, you know, higher levels of water in the springtime. So, we thought about building elevations, floodproofing measures such as culverts, catch basins, or roadside drainage, elevating utilities if possible, or even at the same time putting utilities underground. Thought about some things, simple as storm shutters to prevent those windows from breaking during high winds events, and even in some extreme cases, thinking about how we could relocate or acquire properties that are reoccurring flooding issues. We also identified all the critical facilities in town, and this is where the town, the town employees came in, their, their expertise and knowledge was hands down. We mapped and identified all the town buildings, disaster response sites, shelters, places in need of extra care during, during a natural hazard, places of assembly. We also looked at where the critical infrastructure is when it comes to like dams and water retention, pumping facilities, wastewater treatment plants. We tried to identify as many as possible, and those will all be in a map that the town receives when this plan's complete. Preparedness and response, this category, we thought, we looked at insurance programs, community rating system, which I think, I believe Worcester is the only town in Southern Worcester County that uses that based on its size. Thought about facilities and coordinate with, excuse me, facilitate and coordinate administrations, enforce collaboration, so how well does the town talk to each other, things of that nature. One of the other places that we talked about was education awareness. This is kind of, I guess, the lowest hanging fruit when it comes to hazard mitigation. It can be something as simple as putting a hurricane website on the town's website during hurricane season, it could be sending things out on Everbridge during a time of need, or prior to, excuse me, handing out information at, or having information available at the library, schools, things of that nature, pamphlets, something, some things that are pretty easy and we could consider mitigating hazards. We also looked at, excuse me, local plans and regulations, so this is where we took a look at planning and zoning laws, subdivision site plans, flood regulations, stormwater regulations, building codes, master plans. How can we incorporate that into the hazard mitigation process moving forward, and where is it helping us with hazard mitigation currently? Another, another place that we got a lot of data to put into this plan was through state and federal data on 100-year floodplain, 500-year floodplain, snowfall amounts over the course of the last 20 years, wind speeds, hurricanes, tornadoes, earthquakes, those kind of things. We also, on CMRPC's end, we looked at the state's hazard mitigation plan, and essentially outlined the town's plan based on that structurally wise, and make sure that we're in line with what the state sees as a whole, and while incorporating the local mitigation measures. Some of the other hazards that we looked at, it's just more for your information than anything, is a map of the state's earthquakes since 1990, and surprisingly, the first time I saw it, it was a lot higher than I anticipated, I didn't think we had that many earthquakes in the area. Also below, there's the recent declared hurricane and snow disasters, and this is typically the most impactful thing for New England, especially here in Southbridge, where FEMA will have a declaration, a disaster declaration, and that essentially is one of the pools of money that gets opened up when you have a hazard mitigation plan, a current hazard mitigation plan. So, without the plan, that, that disaster relief money, that pool of money essentially becomes obsolete to the town, but since you're going through this process, there will be money available to the town. Existing mitigation measures, this is some of the things that, this is a few, a small handful of things that the town is already doing that is mitigating hazards, it's having a comprehensive emergency management plan, following all mass state building codes, street sweeping annually, I believe you do it more times than that, catch basin cleaning, drainage, so when the stormwater drains get clogged, the D P W goes on, takes care of that so the water can go where it needs to go. Subdivision rules, following the dam safety, dam safety construction, letting D C R do their thing when it comes to inspection of the dams, staying current with those dams, having a tree trim program, sanding, salting, plowing of the roadways and sidewalks, and having permits for outdoor brush burning at residence homes. So, some of the things that we came up with in the strategies meeting that we had, that I had with the chief and fire department, excuse me, the fire department, police department, D P W, Town Manager, we took a look at a lot of areas in the town, some of, these are, this is a handful, this is five out of 34 strategies that we came up with that day. One of them was the globe area, a comprehensive study of the globe area to assess the feasibility and upgrades to manage undersized stormwater systems in that area. Pursue funding to purchase and install a generator at the town hall, which is crucial to keep up and running with the email systems. Want to continue to install an upgrade in lightning rods on all public buildings throughout the town. Continue to incorporate disaster mitigation action plans into upcoming local and regional plans, so master plans when the time comes, land use, open space, capital programming, transportation plans, all those things. We want to take into account, what do we look at, what do we come up with in this hazard mitigation plan, and what can we approve while we're doing that? Transportation is kind of the easiest one, when the road's getting ripped up, let's fix the roadside drains, let's upgrade the culvert if need be, if feasible. And we also want to upgrade, or excuse me, update the hazard mitigation plan every five years to keep that current, to keep those pools of money open to the town. Kind of the next steps and the final steps of the process of the plan is after tonight, there's a few things I need to shore up, and then we'll put the plan out to a 14-day public comment period. Like I mentioned before, I'll also send the town the link to the survey, so that can go back out during that 14-day public comment period. Once that public, once that period's over, incorporate any comments that do come back from the town, I'll send it off to M I M A, M I M A will approve it, M I M A then sends it to FEMA, FEMA gives it approval pending adoption. So, once FEMA gives us that approval pending adoption, I'll come back to the council, I'll request that the town, or excuse me, the council adopts the plan, or formally adopts the plan, it'll go back to FEMA one more time. That's a very quick process, essentially to make sure that no changes were made, and that we put the adoption certificates and necessary signatures into the document, and then it becomes a live document for the Town of Southbridge. Once, if the council chooses to adopt the plan when that time comes, we want to kind of continue that has, that local hazard mitigation team, we want to try to implement, create an implementation group and implement that plan into everything that we possibly can. How are we going to implement it into all those other plans, master plans, open space plans, things of that nature? Who is, who is going to be the person that seeks these grant opportunities, who's going to reach out to, or excuse me, who's going to write those grants, how are we going to prioritize what we are going to apply for funds for? And at the same time, keep in mind that we're going to update, try to update the plan in the next five years. So, that kind of concludes the summary of the process so far and where we're at with the hazard mitigation plan, and I open it to questions, or excuse me, to the, to the Chair.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. The one question I, I have is, you have the 14-day public comment period, how are you going to advertise that, how are we going to get that message out so that people that have questions could, could, or comment on this, and how do they go about doing that?
So, that's a great question. I will, once I have the, once I have the draft finalized, which I should be able to do tomorrow, I will create a link to the draft, that will be on CMRPC's website, I'll send that link to the town, and the town, best practice would be to put that on the town's website, and if, if the town can, push it out through their Facebook pages and Twitters and social medias and all those, all that good stuff.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, because quite frankly, I never saw the survey, or knew that there was a survey out there, so I think that's probably part of the problem, that there's no feedback, so certainly we want to get as much information back from residents and counselors and stakeholders, so anything that you can do to get those information. I know several councils are very savvy in the social media sphere, and they push out a lot of information, so I'm sure they will do it. I know the fire department does a great job of pushing that out, so if you could get that link so that we can have a, a good comment period, that'd be appreciated.
I'll get you both of those links tomorrow.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I do have a few questions, and I know that your whole document, I haven't had a chance to read it yet because it's fairly lengthy, but, so they may be answered in the document, but I was curious, one of the things that you mentioned earlier about evacuation, it kind of been passing up there, and I was curious, have you guys talked to Tri Epic yet? Because they did an evacuation plan of our region, not specifically for Southbridge, but it included Southbridge evacuation, and all kinds of other stuff, maybe five or six years ago?
Yeah.
So, that, some of that documentation may already be there for you?
Correct.
So, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, but more specifically, I was curious, but when you brought some of these issues, do you, do you also look at the potential hazard of, for example, local industrial leaks or, or facilities that, that could be an issue going forward? I'm not saying that they necessarily are, but you never know, things could happen.
We don't necessarily look into that in this plan thoroughly, because this is, this is all based on natural hazards.
Right.
All the tier-two companies in town are noted, there is a catalog of each tier-two company, catalogued in the plan. So, there's not, there's not necessarily a plan to deal with what happens if X at X company and we have a spill of whatever chemical. I think that's left up more to the comprehensive emergency management plan, the Chief can probably correct me on that one.
That is correct. Okay, okay. One of the things, one of the other things you also mentioned in passing was kind of with stormwater issues, and I was curious if, you might, it specifically mentioned local stormwater regs, which we don't have yet, but I know that our town planners are in the process of looking at devising those now. Does this take into account the way the state is going to require significant changes to stormwater regs going forward?
I don't have 100% answer to you on that, but typically, it's, it's whatever the town is doing based on their stormwater regulations, which 99% of the time fall in line with what the state is kind of handing down, or sort of the, the line, or, I'm at a loss for the word here, but where the, where the state is.
D.
Yeah, the D P, thank you.
Okay.
Where they are in the process, and how they hand that down to the town.
Okay. And one of the other questions I was curious about, you mentioned land use and zoning and stuff like that, have you seen from other, either other towns or the course of the process that you're doing here, any particular kinds of, of land uses that seem to have the best effect on mitigating these kinds of concerns?
Sometimes, there's been creative ways to funnel, redirect water to a park system or something, so where the park can, like the soccer fields or something, or the town common can absorb those waters, so those are some creative land use ways to, to mitigate some flooding concerns. That's kind of the one that sticks. That's kind of the one that sticks out on the top of my head right now.
How about concerns like, do you, do you see concerns with things like solar arrays and agricultural properties?
I'm glad you brought that up, because there's another town where they have a lot of solar panels, and they're typically on a hillside.
Yeah.
And the town is having a lot of problems with, when it rains, it tends to wash out silt, sediments.
Right.
Some loose stones, and that leaves that private solar field and ends up on a public street.
Right.
So then that, that town is now faced with the problem of, well, we have to keep cleaning up after this solar field. Even though it's not, it is the town's problem, it's technically not really the town's problem. It's that, that fine line of, of who should be responsible for this. And one of the strategies that came up, that, that came about with that was to try to build the relationship with the solar company and see how they can rearrange, or, excuse me, redirect stormwaters along with planting like naturals, shrubberies, grasses, things like that, to try to hold that soil together instead of just having dirt and rocks essentially on the hillside, which used to be forested land.
Okay.
So those, those are a couple that really jump out to me right now.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'm sure I'll have more when I actually get a chance to read the plan, so.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Peter, I just wanted to thank you and the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Council for the work on this particular issue. Most people probably don't even know who you are. You're a group that, that works for municipalities in this, in Central Massachusetts to help plan a lot of things. You're involved in transportation improvement funds, the TIP program, involved in, you guys helped us a lot with the Green Communities Program, and now we're doing this. It was great in the meeting that you held and orchestrated on this issue, and, and it was nice to see the give and take from all my department had to be had, all the public safety officials, public works officials involved in this meeting, and everybody gave different input as to what they knew about the town, and I think a lot of good information came about this. As citizens may know, our fire chief is our emergency management program coordinator for, for the town, and they're constantly working on updating their own, I guess, response plan to any kind of emergency, and this ties in very well to what the chief is working on. And Peter touched on it, but it's really critical. When you have a tornado, when you have some emergency, major emergency, one of the big issues is money, and how to fund those programs. The town often upfront has to pay the upfront cost, but through FEMA, we get huge grants back to cover some of those extraordinary costs. Without this plan, we wouldn't get that money. So this is really, really critical that we do a good job here, and the fact that CMRPC is working with us and building that ensures us to be able to get that FEMA money when the time comes, and, and that's really important. So I want to thank you, the chief, and the rest of the, the team that was involved in those meetings, and appreciate all the work you guys are doing for us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Mr. Pelican, thank you for being here tonight. We look forward to those links and the process. We look forward to working with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Citizens Forum, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the town council on any item that is not on the agenda? State name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. I'm sure most of you have heard or saw the interview I did with Congressman Neal a couple weeks ago, and I asked the congressman to come here, and I, I didn't want to pass up the opportunity to ask him some questions about national issues, because we're all interested in that as well. But I did spend a good amount of time talking to him about issues concerning Southbridge. I asked him about infrastructure needs, we have problems with our roads and streets. I had, I did ask him about the fire station and dispatching services and federal safer grants. He offered some good ideas and suggestions, sort of like a federal, state, and local combination on the fire station. He also suggested using FEMA grants, which I thought was interesting, and he said he would absolutely help us with the safer grants. Now, he seemed very genuine to me. I, I, I think that anybody who gets elected to Congress for 30 years, he must get elected that often because he, he cares about his constituents and he does something for the community. So I would just hope that you follow through on this, don't let this go by the wayside. Continue talking to him. I would want to say, before he left, I asked him to come back and he said he would. And when he was leaving, his staff went out, started to go out that way, and he wanted to come this way. And they said, Congressman, this way. He said, no, I want to look at the hall first. And he came out here and looked around, and he, he loved this town hall, so I think he's a real history guy. And I think, I do think he wants to help Southbridge, you know? Doesn't matter what side of the political aisle you're on, we all can agree, we need infrastructure improvements. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marquetti, and I did happen to see that, and kudos to you that you actually got him here. I know that we have been in touch with his office, Town Manager's been in touch with his office, and I thank Town Manager for that. I know firefighter, I'm not firefighter, sorry, I demoted him. Deputy Chief Hewlic is in touch with his office, had been in touch with his office before that, and did follow up on, on the fact that you were here, so we do appreciate that. Anything that you can do to help us move this process along, I would, I think we would certainly be grateful for any help that you, if you can get him here, that would be great, and just let us know when he's coming, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Marquetti. Anyone else wish to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Last call, seeing none, move on. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Melissa Zawarski.
Swawsky.
Swawsky, thank you. Sorry about that. As the treasurer collector for a three-year term effective May 28, 2019 through May 27, 2022. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, a little while ago, I talked about the fact that we're losing our treasurer collector, the real asset to our community. And when we went through the team, we were struggling because we were concerned we weren't going to hire somebody of the kind of caliber we had. And we were very excited that Melissa was one of our candidates. She is an excellent candidate. Our councilors have the resume, but I want to touch on a couple of things. Currently, right now, she is the Finance Director, Treasurer, and Collector of the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts. She has long, extensive knowledge in the area of both finance and is a treasurer collector. She once served as a treasurer collector in Palmer. Tremendous experience, she's got a master's degree, she's a certified Massachusetts Municipal Treasurer since 2009, a certified Massachusetts Municipal Collector since 2010. She's even a certified procurement officer, which is going to be a nice addition to our team. She interviewed extremely well. The interview took place with myself, the current treasurer collector, the finance director, and our HR specialist. She was heads and shoulders above all candidates. We're really looking forward to her work with our team. What's nice is, you know, that we have a KVS system, and she's already working with KVS. She also has some munis experience. It's a little old, but, but better than most of, better than all of our other employees, so she's going to be able to help us a little bit with the munis system as well. I really believe this is a great pick. I think she's going to fit in both in terms of her talent, but also her personality with our team, and I'm looking forward to having her join our team. She's going to be a great new addition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Melissa, do you want to come introduce yourself? So I know there was one council that wasn't able to make our previous meeting, so if you just want to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Melissa Zawatie, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Okay, any questions? Thank you for coming down to the previous meeting where we asked you some questions. I think your experience speaks for itself, especially, I think we were commenting that you have not only municipal side experience, but experience as an elected official in the town that you're, you're from, or had been in a town that you're from, which I think you can understand both sides of the table, which sometimes is a difficult thing for some people, because on one side, you have to balance everything, and on the other side, you're advocating for, for issues. So I think you do bring a wealth of experience. Sad to see Melissa, I mean, Mindy go, but it's, it's great that we have a candidate that, as qualified as you. And I think earlier, you said too, that you have known Mindy throughout the years, working with the KVS system, so I think that she'll continue to be a good resource between the two of you, so.
Yeah.
It's nice that you have that relationship.
I'm glad that she'll be available.
Okay. Any further? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations. Item 10, vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Southbridge and Tri Valley Incorporated for the lease of space for 2019 at the Southbridge Community Center in the amount of $100 per month, respective to the responsibilities surrounding the Tri Valley Nutrition Site. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Steve?
I'm going to have to recuse myself, I work for Tri Valley.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just, just to let everyone know what this is, this is an agreement for the Meals and Wheels program we do at our community center. This provides very important meals for, for many of our seniors who are in need. It's a great program, and we're going to continue to move forward with it.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? One recusal, Counsel Steve's recuses himself. Thank you, Counsel. Motion carries. Vote to authorize the Town Manager to sign the Mass DOT Professional Services Grant Application on behalf of the town for the fuel farm replacement project at the Southbridge Municipal Airport in the amount of $133,300. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Item 12, vote to ratify StanTech's Professional Services Agreement for the fuel farm replacement project at the Southbridge Municipal Airport for the total of $133,300 as a broken down in the, what is that? Professional Services Agreement?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we say that, because people know. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just, just so people understand what we're doing here, we're going to be getting rid of an old fuel tank up at the airport and replacing it with a new fuel tank. StanTech is the engineering company that designs the plans for this. Most of this is coming from a state grant, and we're looking forward to it. The state of Massachusetts has been extremely beneficial to us in terms of getting grants for these type of projects. I believe the federal government is also involved in this one. I want to thank the Airport Commission and Ron for their, their work they've done on this project. It's long needed, and I think it's going to be an asset to the, all the people who use the airport.
Counsel Steve?
I have just one quick question. Unfortunately, I was, I, this did go through GenGov, but unfortunately, I came in late that day because I wrote it wrong in my calendar. So just a quick question. Should we probably state the, on the motion, exactly how much is coming from this town?
The.
Since it is mostly grant money, but we are paying a share.
We already actually voted that. We did the allocation from free cash for that amount, so that's already been expressly voted in a different motion before the Town Council in the past.
Okay. And that question did come up at, at the GenGov meeting before you got there. Any further discussion? Mr. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just respectfully request roll call because of the scope of the contract. Thank you.
Right. Because it was a ratification as well. Roll call, Madam Secretary?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Vote to approve the petition for repairs to a private way at Curroville Avenue, Stevens Street, not to exceed $500 according to Chapter 8, Section 8-102 of the Southbridge, Town of Southbridge Code of Bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Vote to glit, to glit, sorry. Vote to declare the school department's request to declare a 1999 Ford F-350, vehicle identification number of 1FTHF29L9XED36297 pickup truck as surplus, and approve the truck to be scrapped. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I don't know why 20 years, they can't get another few more years out of this truck. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Item 15, vote to add one or more ballot questions pertaining to the repeal of Section 7-509 of the Code of Bylaws, parentheses, "The prohibition on adult-use recreational marijuana establishments," as defined in MGL, otherwise known as Mass General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge, as approved by the Town Council on January 29, 2018, close parentheses, to be voted on by the people at the June 11, 2019 general election. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll just open this up as to why this is before us again tonight. As my fellow councils and colleagues are aware, at the previous Town Council meeting, we had a conversation about trying to go out for legal opinion as to this question. That had come up as a result of the planning and development meeting held by Counselor Adams and his subcommittee relative to seeing about adult-use marijuana and the bylaw that we have in town, and how do we go about either repailing it, amending that provision. We've had a lot of conversations throughout the last month and a half or so about how, how does this council go about doing that? Do we have the right to, to do this? As a result, we had postponed against legal opinion. However, at the general government meeting that followed last week, we had conversation which was on the agenda as to, question as to the bylaw review committee and review of bylaws, and how do you go about doing that? Because we did not receive any citizens that appeared for a bylaw review committee. Also delved into how the bylaw is related to the charter and questions as to charter and getting the bylaws to coalesce. Question came up about this marijuana question, about the rules and, or the, the powers of a council through the bylaw process, and it's very clear, well, let me back up. I had an opportunity to talk to two of our legal councils, not on behalf of the council, it was more of a general conversation. One was one of our council, councils from Merrick O'Connell, and a conversation about a different matter, and what she was dealing with in a neighbor in town, and wanted to know if, if we thought there might be a conflict. And he was given information as to the question on the marijuana question. And I just simply asked him the question as to, is there anything, or how would the council go about repailing a bylaw or making any decision? Is there a timeline on that? And he said, go back to your bylaws and see if there's any time limit as to, is there a two-year limit to go back and review the question or anything like that, but it would all go back to your bylaws. And it was simply two-minute conversation, not billable, it was just a conversation that I had with him. I then had an opportunity to be with our local legal counsel, Robert Caprera, at the Southbridge Business Partners meeting, and we had a brief conversation as to this topic. He was aware of it, and we were just saying, Neil, what do you think the process would be as, as far as a council? And again, it goes to charter, it goes to bylaws of the town, and simply that we are the legislative body of the town of Southbridge. Very clear in the charter, Section 4, General Powers and Duties, Section 4, Chapter 2, Section 4, subsection 1, 2-4-1. Except as otherwise provided in this charter, all general corporate legislative policymaking and appropriations powers of the town shall be vested in the Town Council. Then if we look at the bylaws, Chapter 2-201.2, Authorities and Responsibilities, except as otherwise provided in the Town Charter, all general corporate legislative policymaking and appropriations powers of the town shall be vested in the Town Council, and then it references, see Charter, Section 2-4-1, which I had referenced. So everything that we talked about, and then, and then when we talked about it in the general government meeting, and there was a former counselor there that, I appreciate the fact that he was there because he gave us some questions to think about as to initiative petitions and referendums. How does that work? And his, his conversation was confirmed by, by council as to initiative petitions and referendums rise up from the people. Initiative petition is if a group of citizens wanted us to build a park and, and brought it to the council and said, we'd like to, you'd consider building this park, or whatever it is, and we totally ignored them, they could go initiative petition, have it put on for us to consider. we totally ignored them, they could go initiative petition, have it put on for us to consider. Referendum, on the other hand, is if we took action, and there's certain exclusions to that, however, they could go initiative petition. Or if there was a bylaw that we had approved, and the citizens didn't like that bylaw, they could go referendum route, and within 14 days file a petition to get us to do something with that bylaw. So everything that we had, that I could find, was that we are the legislative body of the Town of Southbridge. We develop bylaws, we approve bylaws, similarly, we move amendments of bylaws through as that body. I think that my colleagues, I'm not going to speak for all of them, but I think, I know my position is, okay, if we have the legislative authority to do this, we could simply, I as chair could simply say to this body, "I'm going to put this on the agenda, vote to repeal this bylaw." And say, "We put it through, we debated it as a council, you know, we have the majority vote, we put that bylaw, and we say to town residents, 'I don't care what you said in 2017 at the ballot box, this council's making a decision for the town.'" I don't want to go that route, I don't think any of my counselors and my colleagues want to go that route. We simply want to ask the residents, what is the intent, what would you like to see the council do? So to do that, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 53, Section 18A, which I passed out to my fellow councils, non-binding public opinion advisory questions on local ballots. And I think that's the crux of the question that we were at two weeks ago, was how do we get this question to the citizens? So that is why this motion is before us, to put a question on the ballot relative to this topic. And I pass that out, and the question simply reads, "Shall the town council repeal Section 7-509 of the Code of Bylaws, parentheses, 'The prohibition of adult-use recreational marijuana establishments,' closed parentheses, in its entirety, and permit within the Town of Southbridge marijuana establishments, parentheses, as defined in Section 1 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, and include adult-use marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, and any other type of adult-use marijuana establishments authorized under Chapter 94G, closed parentheses." So that was the proposed question that I had, we had reviewed. Attorney Caprera, I had him take a quick look at it to make sure that, hey, is this, you know, worded appropriately, just as a quick review, to put out to the people. Again, putting this question on the ballot is simply an advisory question. It's non-binding. It would not bind this council to repeal that bylaw. It is simply to gauge what the public thinks about this topic, and should we revisit it as a bylaw? So I think that's, I think I've taken up the questions through, and the reason for the timing as well, just to go back, when we were at the last meeting, we thought that the question had to be done right the day after that council meeting. And talking to and looking through the Mass. General Law, and accordingly with this, it's actually 35 days prior to the election, so that's why this question is here today. You know, instead of waiting another year, let's take another crack at it. Do we have the appetite to do this or not? So that is why this question is there. It's simply to get it before the voters and the electorate. I know there's passions on both sides. We can have a healthy debate about how we want to proceed, if we want to proceed on this topic, but that is where I stand on this and why it's here today. Okay? Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm totally in favor of putting this back on the ballot as people, several people out there know. I was one of the people who was involved in petitioning to put this on the ballot as a citizen petition a couple of months ago, which was, the phrasing here is almost exactly the same as the phrasing I was using. And I think it's important because of the fact that over the last couple of years, even though we did vote to prohibit those various kinds of businesses in our town in 2017, I think the landscape has changed in several different ways, and I think we have seen that a lot of the, basically the scaremongering that was going on with those kinds of facilities earlier, and the confusion that was going around with the way the laws were not in place at the time has changed. And I think it's really important that we can take a look at this and see what the citizenry of our community really wants us to do. If they decide that we should leave it the way it is, then that's the way it is. I don't have a problem with that. I do think that our town could benefit from doing these things, and we still have the opportunity, obviously, to zone for them, and we will have to do that anyway. And with the host community agreements and the various other processes that go into bringing one of these facilities into town, gives us the time to do that if this ballot question passes. So I'm not worried about having, suddenly having, you know, a bazillion of these things come into town, because they're not going to. It's just not, it's not going to happen that fast. And I think it's a situation where, maybe to be a little bit repetitive, it's something that we can learn from, it's something we can benefit from economically, it's something that we already know, quite frankly, the use is already happening in our community, and they're getting it from places that are either out of our community, which means we're not benefiting from it, or they're getting it in the black market, which, if you saw the PND presentation that Dave hosted with Green Meadows, it's, we're not going to lose the entire black market, but it will gradually trickle into the legal market. That's kind of what happens. And anything that takes it out of the black market is beneficial to the community. That's one, that's kind of my thoughts at the moment, and I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just forgive me, but if the question is worded as it appears before us, we need to make it interrogative and also hyphenate adult use in each instance. Thank you.
If you want to make it, let me know what those are, and I will probably...
Only one of the adult use statements is hyphenated, and there's no question mark at the end to make it a question.
No.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'd have to look at ballot questions about whether they actually do put a question mark at the end or not, but... Any further councils? Counsel Daniel?
I'd like to say that I'm coming out in support of putting a question out to the people. When I ran last year, I said that I would ask the people what their feelings are, and I need to know what your feelings are. There's been a lot of controversy on this, there's been a lot of back and forth, and I've heard from both sides of the story, and I'd like, I'd like in my mind to see this settled once and for all. I do think that I would be in favor of this, though. I think that, I've said before, that Southbridge sits on a three-legged stool. The three legs of the stool are infrastructure, which are good roads and safe buildings, public safety, which means that you feel secure in your daily lives, and good schools, which means that you offer opportunity to those that are coming after us. Frankly, we're turning, we're at a point where we want to make improvements in town. We've been progressive in town, we want to continue to be aggressively progressive in town in terms of offering what the people need. But there is no such thing as a free lunch, and I think that that's a fact that has to be looked at. I think that we need the business, I think that there's very good business potential here. I think that it offers us some opportunity, and I think that it's something that should not be discounted. Thank you.
Thank you. Further councils? Okay, Counsel Steves?
One quick point to make. Also, I just want to point, just for the record, that, I mean, you obviously know where I stand because I just said it, but I also did get an email from a local health person, whose name I can't remember at the moment, who said that she was opposed to doing this. And I know Counsel Armani is opposed to doing this, but, just for the record.
And just so clear, I never stop any citizens or anybody from speaking, I just want to make clear that I know there's feelings on both sides of this topic, that town council rules state that you have three minutes to speak to this agenda item. I usually don't hold people to the strict three minutes, I think others can know that. However, I just want, as a matter of policy, that it is three minutes. And that's no reflection on you, former Counsel, Clemmons. Thank you. Counsel Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I haven't heard you say that in a long time, or any other counselor for quite some time. Denise Clemmons, 128 Country Club Place, Southbridge, citizen member to the General Government Subcommittee, which I was able to be at this evening. This topic is important because it was taken up two years ago, and I do disagree with a number of points that have been made by the counselors, and I don't, and you are correct, Counselor Daniels, there are no free rides, and everything comes with a price. So I'm not quite sure I understand, on the retail side of it, the for-profit side of it, when it comes to private use of marijuana, why, you know, Southbridge should be on that list. But I just want to point out a couple of things. A couple of years ago, when we put this question forward, it was done with much thought and time and energy that went into it with a number of department heads and such, including the police department and such, getting their opinion, getting planning and development, who are very concerned, I mean, the planning board and such, who are very concerned about the fact that we didn't have zoning, that we didn't have, we didn't know where it was going, what it was doing. And we put it out to the citizens with four specific questions. And the questions were legally vetted, they were the questions that were asked in many other communities as well. I point out that out of the 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts, numerous, numerous, over 100, 189 at one point, the number has declined some, had either, had outright banned or put moratoriums and prohibitions on marijuana retail sales of, retail manufacturing, retail sales, retail, different portions of the retail side of it. Medical marijuana facilities, those that cultivate, those that sell, those that distribute, those that test, cannot be regulated. They can be zoned, we can have zoning, which is what has happened here in Southbridge. But when it comes to the for-profit side of things, and making it more available, making the community more at risk, that's the side that I get a little bit concerned about on the usage. Now, people recreational, this state voted 52% or whatever to allow recreational use. That meant people could enjoy at their own leisure, grow their own, and of course, certainly purchase from legitimate facilities. In Southbridge, when we put the question, and Southbridge was one of those communities who also agreed to allow for recreational use. And we all know that's happening, heck, we can walk down any street and smell it, we can drive behind any car, unfortunately, which is illegal, and watch it happening. And I just put it out there as to, you know, why we want to add to that in terms of the illegal use that is happening on the recreational side. I also have some concerns in the way that you have proposed it. Now, I realize that you may change how you propose it, but the question in and of itself, the repeal section 7509 of the Code of Bylaws, I don't see that here. And I don't even have that in my bylaws that I had from when I was a counselor, because the bylaws changed, and I didn't get a fresh copy. I find that, do you all have a copy of 7509 for the public here tonight? Because you're debating something that you're about to remove, and it's certainly much more than the prohibition on adult use of recreational marijuana establishments. As I recall, 7509 had a lot more in it than that. And not to mention as well, the Section 1 of the Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, you didn't, that's not posted online for the community to see for this meeting and for this debate as well, and I have some concerns about that. I would also ask, or have you for thought, had you reached out to our local law enforcements and find out how they felt about retail establishments? And especially retail establishments, perhaps, we're talking retail establishments, pot shops. For the record, I voted no on retail establishments, and I voted yes on manufacturing, cultivation, and testing facilities. Just to be clear, I felt that certain regulated industries were fine, I don't want a pot shop on Main Street. I ask you also, speaking of zoning, can you assure this community, if you repeal this in its entirety, which were four separate questions during the election, each one of those, shall we prohibit marijuana retail cultivating? Shall we prohibit testing facilities? Shall we prohibit manufacturing facilities? And shall we prohibit retailers? Those were four individually, individual questions that were overwhelmingly put down by this community, and you're now wrapping it up into one question, maybe you'll change that, and saying, "Non-binding, of course," but you have 14 days to act on it, once the vote's done, if you choose, anyway. And you then, as the legislative body, could just choose to repeal this and leave the entire town open to any of this anywhere. We have zoning, but can you assure me that there's no space on Main Street or on our main public way there for retail, for pot retail? Have you looked into the zoning? And I know that you can't be near churches, and you can't be near schools, and, you know, there are rules and regulations, I remember that from the zoning. But have you done that research, and can you answer to the public whether or not people would just be walking down the street and be able to grab what they want in a pot store and walk out and light up, which it's illegal to do, but can still happen? We point out other communities doing things. Charlton's putting something on Route 20, drive to it. Sturbridge is putting something, drive to it. Maybe Worcester's doing their thing in the center of town, good for Worcester, they're a big city. We're Southbridge, we have a lot of problems already. This just adds to it. This helps to let everybody just be a little more happy, right? To let them a little bit more relaxed and do their own thing. Again, personal use is personal use, but we don't have to facilitate that, and schools are important, and this makes it much easier for accessibility for the youth of our community, even though it's illegal. It will happen. It won't be the black market, but people are going to do just like they do with alcohol and everything else. Unfortunately, though, there's still the tests for it, we're still waiting for the proper tests, so we can tell when people are intoxicated by marijuana use and making wrong judgment. You know, I have a lot of concern on this, I'm sure I've gone over my three minutes, but I feel that the people of this community, you are very smart. Nobody broke down our doors and said, "We got it wrong." The overwhelming, it was not an overwhelming vote that got it wrong and voted the wrong way, because they wanted, they thought they were supposed to vote yes, and they meant to vote no, that some people will say. It's been two years, we didn't get a petition signed, they couldn't come up with the signatures to bring it up from the people, and so now, we're going to negate this and do something different. I think council at the time, and this council's doing what they feel is correct, but I think council at the time was trying to be proactive and was trying to look out for this community's better future judgment. And I think that bringing it up in one lump sum of repeal, when you don't even have the bylaw listed here, is just, it's, for me as a citizen, and I have the right to say it, I don't feel that it is respectful of the vote of the community that I participated in, it's not respectful of my vote, and it also leaves this community up to a lot more questions. Yes, host agreements are nice, money's nice, but at what cost? Hasn't that been drilled into our head before? At what price shall we pay for these special, you know, host agreements and stuff? What's our community's price going to be? I ask that you really seriously think about how, if you do go forward and put this on a non-binding, that you perhaps choose to split it up again or do something different, and not just repeal that bylaw in its entirety. It's very, very concerning to me as a parent, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as somebody who sat on council for nine years. That's really all I've got to say. Thank you for listening. Would have liked further discussion in general government, and I would have not supported this coming forward to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments on that. In regards to whether we got feedback from any law enforcement officials, we did have the chief of police here at the Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting, he did speak in regards to this topic, the fire chief was here, there are other leaders here, so we did seek input from our local law enforcement officials, and that was a lengthy meeting. As to the repeal in its entirety, there is 7-509, which simply says marijuana, really not a clear bylaw, it says marijuana, doesn't really say the establishment of a marijuana, it doesn't say that's what the actual bylaw is, it's just 7-509 marijuana. There is a statement of intent, which all it does is say that, just like the counsel, a former counselor said about how the town vote went. There is a definition. So the definition is, "For the purpose of this section, a marijuana establishment shall mean a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business for the retail recreational market." Statement of the bylaw is pretty close to what this repeal states. We can certainly take a look at adding some additional items to clarify it, however, I don't believe that this question was unclear that we're proposing. I do have to say, it's interesting, when we look at the same law firm that provided the information to the previous council, that previous council put this on the ballot before July of 2017, where they actually, the law changed in 2017, July, that gave a little different way for this to go before the voters. If I'm understanding this from a couple of pages, that model marijuana establishments banned warrant and articles for towns requiring a ballot vote, was clear that they were supposed to put the bylaw in it when they proposed it and voted it. I might be wrong on that, but in any intent, we... But in any intent, we can certainly take a look at adding some additional information or attaching this bylaw within the question, that that's the repeal and with a dialogue of what we're looking to repeal. We can add that, certainly the entire bylaw to the ballot question if we so choose, so that people are clear. Thank you. Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Chip Norton. I own the Southbridge Innovation Center, the old American Optical Complex. I'm here tonight to discuss specifically adult use cultivation marijuana. I've got a couple of talking points. Can I hand this out, Chairman, to the group?
Sure. Thank you. Do you anticipate this going around five minutes?
What's that?
Do you anticipate this going around five minutes?
I'll keep it short.
Okay, thank you.
For those of you who don't know, we're 1.2 million square foot facility, the former American Optical Complex, with a hotel conference center at the front entrance, and there are a variety of buildings used for manufacturing, warehouse distribution, and hopefully some residential future use. We've got some attributes that are well-suited for cultivation, and that's our specific interest tonight to talk about. First of all, for those who don't know, the property in 2016, I've got preliminary listing on the National Register, which means that the facility, as you renovate space in the property, you get tax credits equal to 20 to 4% of the costs put in, capital put into the property. Secondly, we just completed the development of a cogeneration facility, which is an excellent way to deliver energy, inexpensive energy for cultivation, because it basically provides the electricity needed as well as the heat and cooling. We have a site that's fully secured with two bridges access to basically parcel two, where we have buildings that would fit nicely for this use. And of course, as you know, we're somewhat of a rural environment. We've been approached in the last year or two from folks that want to cultivate specifically for the medical industry, and usually those requirements are small in size, 20, 30,000 square feet. And we're challenged with large footprint buildings, 100 to 200,000 square feet. And the adult use industry is showing a penchant for larger spaces, larger growing areas. So, we are a facility that could accommodate both medical and adult use cultivation. We have three buildings, 3550 and 25K Street. There's a map that's attached to the points that identifies those three buildings. And as I said, we've got square footages that range from 160,000 up to 200,000 square feet. I'd like to speak a second to the economics of marijuana cultivation. Based on 100,000 square foot facility, we've got three areas of potential economic impact to the town. First of all, on real estate taxes, these facilities run about $100 a foot to renovate, $100, $120 a foot. With that kind of investment in a building, the increased assessment would be around $6 million estimate, 122,000 a year in increased taxes to the town, and about 1.2 million over a 10-year period discounted back to today. On the personal property tax, which is the manufacturing equipment, with an estimate of 2.5 million in equipment, that would generate a year one personal property tax of 51,000, about 500,000 over a 10-year period to the town. And finally, the community host agreement, which by law can be charged up to 3% of the gross sales, based on 25 million a year, which would be a very conservative number generated out of that size facility. That's 3/4 of a million dollars in year one, and that would give at some point 3 million over a 10-year period. If you add those three components up, the benefit to the town economically is about $9 million on a present value basis over a 10-year period. As it relates to the jobs for 100,000 square foot facility, we're talking ranges in the range of $50,000 to $100,000 for top management. And obviously, the focus would be to hire locally initially for those jobs. I brought along tonight a gentleman, Dennis Cunian, who is a third-party expert in cultivation in marijuana, both residential, excuse me, adult age and a distal. And I'd like him to speak to some of the other components, the non-economic components related to growing.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dennis Cunian. I'm not from Southbridge. I think I wish I was, but I'm not. And over the next hour and a half, I want to talk to you a little bit, no, just three minutes, I understand. I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that you may not have thought about regarding cultivation. I've been in the consulting business for cultivation for the past eight years. I got involved in this because I believe in it as a passion. We talk about people growing to get a little bit high and feel a little bit good. That's not why my cultivation people grow. They grow to help people with debilitating conditions, such as Parkinson's, such as rheumatoid arthritis, such as PTSD, and things of that nature, suffering from chemo, from cancer, and so on and so on. Currently, the numbers of cultivation centers that I am involved with and represent currently serve 80,000 patients a month. Things like reducing seizures from 50 seizures a day down to one and two seizures a day. We don't cure seizures. We don't cure cancer. What we do is we reduce it so that people can live a normal life. And to me, that's what cultivation is all about. Benefit for the town, there's no smell at all. It doesn't smell like a skunk. It doesn't smell like anything. There is no smell. The product is prepackaged before it leaves the facility, and therefore, there isn't any smell. In terms of traffic, there is no traffic, other than the employees that work at the facility. It's like any other industrial building. You don't even know it's there. The only way you know it's there is you'll see an excessive amount of cameras, and you'll see great lighting exteriorly, on the exterior. So, that may give you a hint that something's going on there. There are no sounds. It doesn't generate, on the 50 or so cultivation centers that I've been involved with, there have been no issues regarding crime. There have been no issues where the police are called or anything of that nature. It is just another facility that is housing some sort of industrial work. It doesn't have advertising on the front of it. There's no big green leaf or anything of that nature. It is a great opportunity for the town besides the community host agreement. In all of the communities that I have worked, each of those communities receive other benefits, such as beyond the community host agreement, helping become a member of the community, joining the Chamber of Commerce's, helping with raising money for the ball field, such as we did in Greenfield, or helping with a festival that we did in Lowell, and things of that nature. So, there's a lot of additional dollars and support, both in man-hours and in dollars that can come to play for the city. And I think those things are very, very important. Now, have any questions?
Steve? Actually, I do think, is it Mr. Cunian you said your name was?
Dennis, Dennis Cunian.
Okay. One quick question is, you said that you grow primarily for the medical market. Do you see any difference in terms of growing for the adult use market?
There is no difference. Absolutely no difference whatsoever.
I didn't think there was, but I thought that.
No, it's the same product. The only difference is in the dosing.
Okay.
But there is absolutely no difference whatsoever. Neither product smells at the cultivation. And I might mention to you that this is highly regulated.
Right.
It is unbelievable. You just don't walk in, get a signed community host agreement, and go to work. Cannabis Control Commission has a tremendous amount of pressure on them to make sure that every individual associated with a cultivation growth facility is vetted very, very carefully. And they are.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else?
Just a couple of questions on the financial numbers you're using. First, this $25 million in terms of annual gross sales, where do you get that number from? How do you come about 25 million? And you're talking about just for cultivation, right?
Just for cultivation, right.
Is it based on what?
Based upon the fact that those sales, and that's a very conservative figure. Those sales are sold to dispensaries, to retail locations. There are no sales that are made to the consumer directly or to the patient directly. And that also, part of that is also included in the manufacturing, which are the oils and the ointments or the edibles. And that's, again, a very, very conservative figure. I can tell you that right now, out of the 50 cultivation centers that I'm involved with, the average monthly sale is over $4 million.
So, refresh me, maybe I got this wrong, but my memory serves me that, I could have sworn that host agreements were limited to five years, at least right under the current law, that you can only do a host agreement up to five years. You're basing your 7,352 over 10 years. How are you basing that? Am I wrong? I thought it was a limitation of five years.
Five years, yes, that's absolutely correct.
So, then how do you double and give me a 7,352,000 number based on 10 years when it's only five years?
Because what we do is project it out.
But I don't know if we're going to be able to get a dollar after five years under the host agreement, because the state hasn't determined that yet. The state is saying the maximum host agreement is for five years.
It's 3%. It's 3% a year. That's absolutely correct.
You understand what I'm saying? You're doubling it. I don't know how you're doubling it.
We're basing the 10 years on 3%. Now, that could increase.
Well, it could disappear. That's what I'm trying to say. The agreement says you only do 3% to five years. Does not give the town, at least right now, does not give the town the ability to tax after that five years.
Right, okay.
So, I just want to make sure you understand that number's double.
I absolutely do.
I'll give you the good news on the other side of this, right? My understanding is, and again, to clarify through you, if you're an expert on this, is that the towns for recreational marijuana are allowed to tax 3% impact fee and 3%.
Excise.
Excise, and you only count 3%. So, there would be a 3% impact fee that could be involved that the town would get for revenue as well on this. Isn't that true?
If the town does the retail, but with the.
Is that only retail or any recreational marijuana?
Only retail. There's no excise tax with cultivation. That's correct.
So, you wouldn't be, that's why your number here isn't the additional 3%.
Right.
But if we, if this bylaw passed, the town, within effect, any retail sales will get three, additional, 6% on retail sales.
On retail, not additional.
It'd be three and three, a 3% impact, 3%.
Three for the community host, and then you get the 3% directly from the state.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're using right numbers.
We're on the same page.
These numbers are not exactly accurate, so I just wanted to be clear for the record.
I understand.
If that 7,352 is cut in half.
Right.
In terms of, at least what we know right now.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. But I will tell you again, that that number of 25 million is very conservative.
Okay.
Okay? And there is, just for the record, there is a tremendous shortage right now of cultivation and testing laboratories in the state of Massachusetts. And a matter of fact, a number of states, a number of cities and municipalities are not allowing cultivation or retail because of the fact that they're lacking in the testing laboratories. So, I'm sorry it took more than three minutes. Any other questions?
Respond to that, just to make it, I'm sorry. Just to be responding, right? As more and more of these cultivation facilities open up across the state, that might shrink your 25 million of the number as well, because we don't know how many cultivation facilities will be approved throughout the state.
That's right.
So, we don't know if that 25 million is high or low. It might be low at this time, but in the future, it might be high. I just want to make sure that the record is straight. We don't know those numbers.
You're absolutely right, and that's why we stayed very conservative. Just so you know, the city of Boston is mandated for 52 retail licenses that they must, by law, have within the next three years. That's an incredible number.
It's a big number.
It's 20% of the legal licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
Dave Smith, 145 Ridge Road. Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for a citizen to raise a point of order?
I think I know what your point of order is, but go right ahead.
I think information, whether it's pro or con on the issue, is very important. But it's not pertinent to tonight's discussion before council. So, we can talk about all the statistics, figures, doesn't mean anything towards what you're voting on tonight. So, I would ask that if anybody does bring information up, that they should be called out of order. And the conversation is specific to the agenda item and what you're going to vote on tonight. I think all this stuff is great, but not tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. So, after you deal with that, then later, I'll be back up to say what I got to say.
I'll give you additional time, Mr. Smith, if you like.
No, it's not my turn.
Yes.
So, if I speak my mind on something, will I be heard or am I going to be called out of order?
Just a second.
I was actually thinking along the same lines that Dave was just thinking about, because I like the fact that that was interesting, interesting information, but he is right. It was, it was a little off-topic, considering the topic is specifically whether or not we are putting a ballot question on. Okay.
Yeah, I understand it.
It was interesting.
It was interesting information to give you whether we should pursue this line for repeal or not. So, I'll give a little leeway, and then we'll see where it goes. Please, with all due respect, the only one that can rule you out of order is, they can raise a point of order, the only one that can rule you out of order is the chairman. And I do my best to respect every person that comes up here.
Lovely.
Okay? So, if you just take it to the question at hand of what we have.
Great.
And you just may begin.
Pamela Paquin, 16 Ellis Road. Thank you for having me. Few points. So, I just wanted to raise the point that I have a master's degree in political science. I used to work on Beacon Hill writing legislation with a representative. I had to read that question three times at the ballot in order to understand which way I wanted to vote. I'm highly educated. I am litigiously minded. I've written laws, and I had to read it three times. So, that was very difficult. And if you look at, just to go back to the point of what was the difference, it was 55% to, it was a three percentage differential. So, it wasn't wildly pro or con. And I believe that that was a result of the language. And I've raised this before, but I would really like yes to mean yes and no to mean no. And I understand that there has been some work on the question, should it be taken to a vote to proceed? And I would really appreciate it if yes meant yes and no meant no. So, that is my request. I will leave aside my opinions, I'm obviously incredibly in favor of this rule passing. I've lived with marijuana being legal where I've lived before, in highly cosmopolitan, incredibly wealthy places. I do not see this as a damper. I moved to Southbridge, growing up in Wayland, Massachusetts, and living in Europe for 10 years, because I see this town as the future of our country. We have immense capacity here. And I do not want to see that snuffed out because of fears and mythical beliefs, because I've seen what cities and towns look like where marijuana is legal. And they look a lot different. You know, they look like where I would like to be heading for this town. So, that's that on that. And I just wanted, because I didn't get a chance to say this earlier to the emergency plan that you guys were reviewing, and I believe that there was a question about erosion from solar arrays. And the statement after that, that you said was, "If you have something to say on something that's not on the ballot, please speak now." And so, I didn't see that there was space for me to speak to something that was, or sorry, the agenda. Something that's not on the agenda, please speak now. So, I wanted to speak to that emergency plan now, since now's my time.
So, let me just.
Yes.
Take this. For the record, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the citizen to discuss the previous item, because she wasn't, you know, it was, second. Okay? All those in favor?
Okay.
Opposed?
Thank you.
That's just a procedural to allow us to, we can suspend rules.
Sure. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
All right. As you know, I'm involved in agriculture in the community. And I want, I've been to several Conservation Commission presentations by solar array companies. And one of the questions that I asked when they were there was, "Do you calculate for the aspiration of trees that you're cutting in town?" Because the majority of the solar arrays that we've had in town are on hillsides, on forested land. And, sorry. And the problem with that is that a mature tree, which currently, because they were fields and they've had 50 to 60 years to grow, they comprise of mature trees at this point. The average mature tree pulls up 36,000 gallons of water a year. So, when you multiply that times. So when you multiply that times 20 acres, and, does anybody know roughly how many acres along, what is that? Is that Dean Brook? What is that river by Dresser Hill Road?
Dean Brook.
Dean Brook. There are something like 60 to 70 acres that have been clear-cut over Dean Brook on a hillside, and not one of the solar companies had measured for the aspiration of those trees being cut down for the erosion control mechanisms they were putting in place over that brook. And that empties into a FEMA floodplain, where we have massive infrastructure, like the Big Y and the Brookstone Terrace Apartments, I think they're called.
Brookside.
Brookside. The last point of that is an agricultural one, which is just that soil takes, for every inch of soil you have to grow, it takes 500 to 1,000 years to replace it. So one inch of arable land soil takes 500 to 1,000 years to replace. So when we don't have erosion control mechanisms, it's not just dirt on the road that we have to pick up. We are losing thousands of years of capacity for agricultural production in this town. So, that's my point. There you go.
No, thank you. That's very educational. It's something I didn't know.
Yeah. The solar arrays aren't calculating for it. So it's something you might want to ask for in future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Cheers.
Thank you for your information.
Again, Dave Smith, 145 Ridge Road. I attended the subcommittee meeting tonight. And basically, what council is going to be voting on, basically, is asking the voters to reconsider their vote of two years ago. I just don't see a problem with council asking the voters. Now, I do have a question on some of the items. If you look at state law, when we're talking about non-binding questions, I think state law is specific in where that non-binding choice is from. This is not one of them. Now, I just want to bring that to your attention. You guys can do the homework. Now, Mr. Chairman, do you know exactly what motion the council will be voting on tonight? Is it going to be what was submitted, or this back paragraph? And I would ask you if you could read it.
The vote is to add a question, then I would suppose that we would vote to what the question's going to be, yes.
Okay, so you haven't decided on the exact question yet?
There was a proposed question that I distributed, which was very similar to what the agenda item specified.
Okay, because, well, let me just make my point. In the agenda item, you're asking the voters to repeal.
Correct.
An item that only you have the authority to create or abolish.
Correct.
The town said, hey, when we went to this form of government, that's your decision, people. You people represent us.
Right.
So, if you can create a bylaw at a snap of a finger, and you know you can, you should be able to abolish it at a snap of a finger. You don't need the vote.
Correct.
Now, so with the wording there, again, see, I was one of those ignorant people that voted two years ago, that didn't read the question. Maybe it's because I'm old-school, and I know I'm being repetitive for the counselors. But I'm from the old-school where you look at a ballot question, and usually, yes means yes, no means no. That was not the case on this issue two years ago. I have spoken to people in Southbridge that voted wrong. I voted wrong. I didn't, like Counselor Manor will say, I didn't read the question. And I didn't. Because I assumed too much, and I was wrong. Based on that issue alone. Now, I don't know how, what the result will be at the election. I think it'll be approved, but I can't say that for sure. I do like the idea of only one question. I agree with, I don't have a problem with this on the last page as your motion, and I don't think it discusses, oh, yes, it does repeal the code of bylaws. Take that out of there. Now, because it's all you're asking the people to do, is take a look at it again. You're asking them to reconsider. If it should pass, now, you want to keep the non-binding wording in there. Depending on the way it goes, I might be up here, and other people might be up here, arguing about what non-binding means. So what are you doing, changing it? It says non-binding. You don't have that authority. Get the wording out of there. Now, what was the last thing? After the vote of the people, let's make an assumption that it's yes. I think that's going to be the trigger. You create your new bylaws, you talk to your plan, you get your act together. Maybe I'd ask them to start looking at it early, in case. The only thing I don't like in any bylaw, under the old charter, when the town of Southbridge passed a bylaw, automatically, the Attorney General had review 30 days. When the town passed a bylaw in the past, was not effective for 30 days, to allow for the Attorney General's office to review the bylaw. So we always had, if prior councils passed a bylaw, we knew it was going to be checked by the Attorney General's office. That no longer works for the town of Southbridge. It's outlawed in the first page of the charter.
Correct.
So any bylaw you voted, someone wants to take you to court, challenge you on the legality of the bylaw, go to court. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Harvard, 12 Ellis Road. I just wanted to come up and give you a couple of minutes back, because it's going to be quick. Just wanted to let you know, another citizen who's never used marijuana in my life, but I'm pro-putting this ballot back on, or this question back on the ballot, and hopefully you guys will make the right decision after the citizenship votes, yes. For yes, be yes; no, mean no. And as we've heard before. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's John Polaski, 87, Old Northwood Stock Road. I have a question. Was the four questions that were on the ballot, or five questions were on the ballot on this subject, did that get on the ballot through the council, or was it through citizen petition?
That was through the council.
Okay, so.
It was an advisory question. It was a two-step process. If you voted yes, if the town voted yes for recreational marijuana in the November 2016 ballot, and you wanted to prohibit it, the town then had to put it on the ballot first, and then the legislative body had to draft the bylaw and approve the bylaw.
So the criticism earlier this evening, that this wasn't really valid because it wasn't collected, the signatures weren't collected, would apply to that?
No, it had nothing to do with signatures at that time.
Okay, so that same criticism would apply to those questions years ago?
The council did the right thing by putting it on the ballot.
Oh, I don't disagree. I'm just saying, there was a criticism earlier by one of the speakers, that the validity of this wasn't solid, because they weren't able to collect enough signatures. Yet, signatures weren't collected at all the last time, so that kind of moots out that criticism.
However, in respect to that council, that was a requirement, that was the process for that. So they didn't need the signatures. So they did nothing wrong.
They didn't need them.
They did not.
I'm just saying, there was a criticism this evening, that this tonight didn't have the support, or didn't get enough signatures, but the other didn't. I don't really understand why it was a criticism. But something, I'm very concerned about the drug problem in this town.
The what?
The drug problem.
Yes.
And although this isn't happening very often, there has been, in this country, in this state, not too far from here, in fact, fentanyl added to street marijuana. So when people claim that having legitimate, regulated marijuana sales, that that is somehow a step backwards, that it's good to prevent that, I just can't wrap my head around it. Also, if someone is trying to get street marijuana, for lack of a better term, I prefer the word cannabis. Some people think that marijuana is a slur to the Mexican people. I can see that. Anyway, when someone goes, let's say, to a crack house, a place that also sells crack to buy marijuana, do we really want that? Do we want people, I just, I just don't get, you are making, if the town votes for this, we're going to have, I'm not saying safe, and people that are young should stay away from marijuana, but safer marijuana. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. It doesn't show the community that we're being lackadaisical, or that it's okay to get high. What it's saying is, if you're going to get high, it's wise to know what you're smoking, or whatever else you're doing. Now, my grandfather, my maternal grandfather, in Palmer, during the depression, during the depression and during the time of prohibition, he used to make something called applejack. He made alcohol illegally. They would ferment apple juice, apple cider, and freeze it. It was clean. I don't think anyone ever died from drinking applejack. And when we have laws, now, there were people out in Palmer, in Monson, the area he lived at the time, that did die from drinking bad alcohol. Alcohol that wasn't made. This is a life or death issue. It might look good. It might make people feel good to say, oh, we don't allow marijuana sales. But you truly, honestly, could be saving lives by allowing more regulation and the lawful sales of this substance in our community. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steve?
Thank you. Just to go back to what somebody mentioned earlier, just to point out, Charter Section 12-4-1 says that any vote of the town council, blah, 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 shall not be operative until, after the expiration of 14 days. Just so you know.
Because it gives them 14 days to do the referendum.
Exactly. That's, any bylaw takes 14 days to take.
But he is correct. That does not, under the charter, because of the way the government is set up, it is not subject, any of our bylaws are not subject to Attorney General review.
Right, not anymore. Exactly.
Right, correct.
And also, I was just curious, for the sake of discussion for the moment, since we've had a couple of people say, express concerns about making sure that yes means yes and no means no. And I personally think the way we've got the question worded, yes does mean yes. However, I don't know if this would be clearer, and I think it says the same thing, which is, shall the town council legalize adult-use marijuana establishments as defined in Mass. General Law Chapter 94G, and create bylaws to implement and regulate such businesses?
So, my understanding is, adult-use marijuana is legal?
Yes.
The cultivation, all that, is legal, but subject to zoning?
Yeah.
So, it's already legal, so.
Except it's not legal in our town to do it for the commercial market.
Under the bylaw?
Yeah.
So we're not looking to legal, it's already legal. We're looking to repeal a bylaw that prohibits what we're doing, so I think.
Which is true, too.
You know, so I think we're pretty clear. I would say that perhaps, and I would, it's up to my fellow counselors, to perhaps put a paragraph, just like they do the state ballots, that, on the ballot, that this would repeal, you know, repeal the bylaw and have a copy of the bylaw right into the ballot question, so that people that read it, this is what the ballot, you know, the ballot is to repeal this. This would, you know, overturn the ballot, you know, of this, because very clearly, in the bylaw, it's articulated in the bylaw, the intent of the voters in November, that they voted to approve, then, on each of these dates, and this is right out of the bylaw, that there are the four questions, a definition of what marijuana establishment is, and a statement of the bylaw. I think that would be very clear, that if we put all that information there, and with a paragraph that says, you know, this would, you know, reverse, or whatever, however we want to craft it, but include this entire bylaw in the ballot question.
I think that would solve the same purpose.
You know? And then, nobody can say, well, I don't understand, I don't know what it is. They can read it, understand it, and it's a question.
Mm-hmm.
Huh?
I might find that, too.
Question for you, Mr. Chairman, just a, or comment. I just know that it's a lot to read in a voting booth, and it would really slow down the voting process. I think you could do that, it would, I don't know how many words you can put on a ballot question on a machine, and how that works.
They have a back of a ballot, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager. The state does it all the time. I mean, we're going to have one small ballot for election in Southbridge, and they can put it on there and have as much information as we can. I mean, I don't think this is, we do it for big questions in state, in federal elections. If we really want a true sense and get information out there, and listen, if somebody wants to read it and understand it, fine. I mean, we're putting this out there. This is what we're telling them. This is what you want, you know, we can, you know, when we, when the ballot goes out on the town website, that it could all be there, all that information be there, and voters can do the homework. You know, if there's a pro group or a con group, do whatever you got to do. I'm not telling them to do it, but I'm just putting this out, I think we, as a council, are just putting this out there to say, do you want us to reconsider this? And I think the question is, do you want to reconsider it? Thank you.
Agreed.
All right. Any further questions? Mr. Pan? I just, just real quick, I'll just have to entertain a motion, because the rules are that only citizens can address at the agenda, but can we take a motion to suspend the rules and allow this individual as a new business?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you. That's just a procedural thing to allow you to speak.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman. And I will not speak long. First of all, it's not the first time I've spoken before this group. I think it was about nine months ago that I was invited to speak in reference to the medical marijuana dispensary we wanted to bring to Southbridge. It was Mr. San Angelo that first extended me the invitation to speak to the group, and since then, we've been hard at work to get our special permit in order. And I'm not a citizen, but I am here to maybe make a little bit of news. On Friday, our company closed on its property, and now is, holds the deed on the property on Canal Street, so we are a taxpayer, if not a citizen, and we're very proud to be so. I came with our COO and our attorney, who's also presented here before, and we're thinking, we'll give you statistics and all, and that's not, that's not what tonight's about. Tonight's about this ballot question. And rather than go on too long, I was sort of sitting there thinking about what I would say. I'm also privileged to have been asked to participate in the parade on Memorial Day in Southbridge, not for any feat of my own, but for just an association perhaps with my family, and I'm proud to bear that. And I started thinking about that, and I don't want to put too fine a point on it, but Memorial Day, 4th of July, Martin Luther King, there are a few civic holidays that resonate very, very strongly over others, and Memorial Day might be, that might be at the top of the list. And I think that, in that context, to think about, what are we honoring on that day? Well, if we think about the men and women that we are honoring, that have given their lives, if they were to look at this body and say, you know, the question they are pondering is to give the citizens another chance to be heard, I think that that's something very proud, to say, that anybody would say, it's a complicated matter, let's let the citizens be heard one more time. And I don't think how that could ever be wrong. And there may be points of order that call into question, and I respect that completely, but I don't think that could ever be wrong in the context of what this country is about. And again, not to be too highfalutin about it, but I do think that's not irrelevant to this kind of a discussion. You're letting the citizens have a voice, and I think that's very commendable, no matter how they choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so, Councilman Ash?
Excuse me, thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you, appreciate all the input from those that were concerned enough to come out tonight, especially those that are residents, but with no lack of respect for those that drove some great distances to share some thoughts. I guess I go through and I read this, and I wonder, you know, we have, what, 36 or 37 days now until the election? Did I misunderstand something along the line? We have fire station referendum perhaps later in the year? Was this always the intention to bring it forward in June?
No, it was not an intention to bring it, I mean, it was, you have to do it at a general election, or... general election, or the election, I mean, we have no, I don't believe the fire station, I'll speak as the chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, I don't think that we will have anywhere near any questions answered as to funding federal, state, the local impact, or what the final cost would be to be prepared to bring it to a referendum, nor would I ask the citizens of Southbridge to spend on a special election to put that fire station. I think that is probably a year out anyway, by the time we work through financing and state and local federal grants. So I, I think the solution would, on that, is no, there was no intent to have a referendum later in the year for fire station.
So it was always to bring this to the ballot in June 2019?
No, it wasn't. We had talked about it at the last meeting to perhaps hold off on it, because the question was, we thought that we were, we were out of time at the April 20, whatever the last meeting was, the April 23 meeting, when we found out that there was some additional time, the several councils, and we discussed it, or I did some homework as well as to, okay, if we have 35 days, is there a way to get this question out to the citizens of Southbridge? Because it was a topic of great question, there was business people that approached economic zoning, had been looking at it as well, and, and so, could we get it on the ballot? I mean, that, that really is the question, and I think the question was simple. We don't have to bring it to the ballot box at all, Counselor. There is nothing that says we have to bring this to the ballot box. We could simply entertain a motion to repeal the bylaw at our next meeting, vote it. We shouldn't, right? We shouldn't. That's not as good government, given the fact that there were two different sides, but that's within our purview. The other question is, I think this council in the last year has been very proactive to move things along with thought and work on it, and if, if this is a question, why wait until another year to get it on a ballot a year from now to ask a question, or simply the new council could simply say, we're not even, we don't even care about the voters? So there was no intent all along. I don't know what your thought is of that, but there was no intent all along to get this on this June ballot, at all.
Thank you. I made no insinuation that that was the case, so I can appreciate your speculation. But at the end of the day, I'm much more satisfied than I was two weeks ago with this step, with this method. It more than accomplishes what I was asking for, which was to be explicit, and you have within the question all of the components. Could I scrutinize, maybe come up with something different? Maybe?
Question mark.
But we've talked this to death for two years now, and quite frankly, I'm not going to another meeting on marijuana, recreational marijuana. Regardless of how some might think, I've been through enough of them, I look at this, and I'm happy to say, the way this is worded, regardless of yes equals yes, no means no, this is the right way to ask a non-binding question, should we repeal? So, I'm okay with this, and I'm, I'm quite happy to take the vote on this tonight.
Thank you. Any further question? So, the motion before us is vote to add one or more ballot questions pertaining to repeal of section, so I won't read it all, because it's in front of you. I would ask for an amendment, if anybody would entertain an amendment, to add the question as written with the commas and the question mark, because I did look at the other, I did look at the other questions that were posed, to add it, that question, shall the town council repeal Section 7-509 of the Code of Bylaws, the prohibition on adult-use recreational marijuana establishments in its entirety, and permit within the town of Southbridge marijuana establishments as defined in Section 1 of Mass. General Law Chapter 94G, and include adult-use marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, and any other type of adult-use marijuana establishments authorized under Chapter 94G? Question mark.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the question as amended? No, on the amendment, any questions on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Okay. Do you, do you need me to read the whole thing, or are we good? I would just ask, would you agree with my assertion that we do include the entire bylaw in the ballot question?
Yes.
Is that you?
I would agree. I would also say, I don't know if we, we do probably need to clarify whether we can, whether we can legally put the whole bylaw on, but let's get this done. Let's put it on, we can clarify that after the fact, but we could also, we could also figure, we could also mail out the bylaw to everybody. And just to point out, it is on the town's website, under the town's bylaws. I'm curious, and the printed copy I have doesn't have it, but it's also an older version, but it is definitely on the town's website.
It is. That's where I got the printed copy of it. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the question as amended? Oppose, you're an honest, loyal person. Thank you. So that will go on the ballot. Counselors' forum. Counselor Nash, I'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad that's over.
Yeah.
And I think for the first time in a long time, I have very little to say, except that I wish Mindy all the, all the best. I'm very sorry to see her leaving town, as the town manager said earlier. She's been a great resource in my time on council, and even before then, and I, I think that Nantucket is lucky to have her. I admire the fact that Nantucket's a great place to work and live, and I'm very happy for her for that at this, at this juncture. She's a, she's an asset, a great resource, and I'm sure that we have someone coming in who's going to do a great job as well. So, while I'm sad to see Mindy go, because she's been such a great resource, I'm optimistic we have another great person coming in to continue the progress that the town's making. That's all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been asked by a couple of people about the Central Street parking lot, and I just want people to know that I went down Friday to ask about it in the planning department, and it is scheduled, the first phase is scheduled to be done on June 30, 2019, and that everything is on track. There have been some work order changes that have been involved, which has slowed it up a bit, and the weather also hasn't cooperated, as I'm sure we're all aware at this point about the weather. But it is on track to be finished, the first phase, finished for June 30. The second phase, which includes the landscaping, and the benches, and the lights, that sort of thing, should be done by December 30, December 31, 2019. So there is light at the end of the tunnel, it may look like there's not much going on, but there is a lot going on. I walked the site myself, I found a lot of conduit that had been laid ahead of time, the granite curbing is in place, there's dig-safe markings and surveyor markings as well that are down, and they're fresh. So work is happening, we just have to get the right opportunity to get it finished. I'd also like to say that, in response to some comments that I've seen in social media, you know, if, if you're looking for family restaurants, if you're looking for quick service, if you're looking for fine dining, it's all available in town. And I think that if you just use social media, if, there are a couple of apps that I can't mention, but they're very good about referring people to the restaurants in town, I think if you take a few minutes just to look and see what is available, you'll see that there are some very fine dining experiences available, regardless of the level of culinary expertise you're looking for. So I encourage you, please stay in town, please patronize our local establishments, they could use it, and by word of mouth, spread the good news, because there's a lot of good eating in town, and I'm definitely an example of that. Thank you.
Counselors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a reminder that next Wednesday, all flags go to, should go to half-staff for Peace Officer Memorial Day, and members of those police officers this year and in the past that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the, the job that they do every single day. Also, on the 27th of May at 8:30, the Memorial Day Parade will kick off here in front of Town Hall. I will post the stuff on social media here in the next couple of days of the parade, and some of the speakers, and hopefully get my hands on the actual digital map of the route itself. That's it, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick things. First off, I just wanted to mention that this afternoon, the Southbridge Fire Department did a, a quick demonstration of why it's so important to have sprinklers in your house, and it was pretty eye-opening. They have, have this little, have this trailer they were setting out, because they were part of that, the conference that was going on for the hotel today, and they had a trailer set up where you had two makeshift rooms, one was, one was with sprinklers, one was without sprinklers, and it lasted exactly four minutes. By the time they were done, your house with sprinklers was still, was waterlogged but still usable, the one without it was gone. So just think, keep, keep that in mind, if you ever have to renovate your house and put sprinklers, then you might want to do that pretty quickly. Also, let's see, on May 18, at 8:30, the Southbridge Cleanup Day is going on, starting here at Town Hall, so you'll see people spanning out with gloves and bags and, and those little clipper things to pick up trash around town, so please join us and come down and help out, and our town really does need a little bit of a, a little bit of assistance every once in a while, and we wish it didn't, but it does. And also, if you have your own neighborhoods, I know Maureen and I do it on a regular basis, get out there and just kind of keep an eye on your own neighborhood and clean some of this stuff, because you can do it a little bit, 10 or 15 minutes every few days, or every couple of weeks, and you don't have to pick up so much once a year. Also, last thing, two more things. One is that on May 25, if you're interested, the Big Bunny Farmer's Market will be starting. And also, for those who are concerned, there's a, the Energy Facility Siting Board is doing, has rescheduled for a new public hearing on the project that's going on in Charlton. It's literally maybe 200 yards north of the town line, right on 169, their preferred, their preferred site is somewhere, is tucked between our town line and the existing Millennium Plant, where they want to put in a huge facility to store natural gas in one giant tank. They were originally going to do 10 prefabricated 100,000-gallon tanks, but now it looks like they're switching it over to one enormous tank. So that's a little scary, especially considering it's right down the street from our town, and, and it's a little uphill from the town, so anything that does leak ends up going down right into Cody Brook, Katy Brook, and possibly into our community. So that's a bit of a concern. That's a May 29, Wednesday, at 7:00 PM at Charlton Middle School Auditorium. And that's all I had at the moment. Our next council meeting is a council of the whole on Monday, the 13th, at 7:00, which we, as the chairman mentioned, is for the rail trail. Is that going to be entirely executive session, or is that partially executive session, partial open?
We'll open it in open session, and then we'll get to the least part, and what we have from legal counsel and all that. We'll go into executive session, and then we may come back out.
Okay. Oh, and we also have the, Monday, the May 20 meeting at 7:00 PM here in chambers will be the budget adoption meeting, so. That's it.
Thank you. Before adjourn, thank you, Counselors, for healthy debate tonight. Debate is great. I think it's great discussion, and to all the citizens that were here, I think it was a respectful conversation, and thank you all that participated. Appreciate it. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Summit.
All in favor? Thank you, and have a good night.